You came up with some draft blasting provisions because we don't have.
We had emails on it.
Right, I don't, did it get worked into?
I don't remember the, that resolution, I don't even.
You don't have to look tonight, but let's put a post-it note on it and make sure those get worked in as well. Because I know, because of the, um, the power up there, there's gonna be some of that going on.
There are no blasting conditions in it right now.
Alright, so Lino, add a post-it note to his folder for blasting conditions. You didn't think you were getting off scot-free tonight, huh? I knew he wasn't.
I've never been able to give somebody homework like this before. It's like exciting. It's not gonna last long.
No, it's not.
An hour, but.
Alright, I think that, I think for tonight, that's it. You'll, you'll work, and then we'll get you on the next agenda and the full board will give you as far as. Yeah. Cool.
Yes, our, our memo doesn't discuss the county referral, um, for the sewer, so you may wanna just add that to your notes for your discussion with the applicant, Mike.
He can get that started, though. He doesn't have to wait on us to make a decision.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, is I think it's the applicant's responsibility, or does the board refer that, Kelly? How is that handled?
I don't remember how the letter is written from the county.
It says that we, I thought it said that we shall refer.
I thought it was coming from the village.
That we shall refer all requests going forward. So, alright, the cover base, I want for motion to have Natalie refer this application to the county, um, health department for review. If we don't need it, we don't need it, but if you have it, you have it.
It's gonna be this Orange County Sewer District. That's okay.
Orange County Sewer District, sorry. You heard what I said.
I know what you mean, yeah.
I'll amend my motion.
If, Steve, if you guys want, sorry.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I just wanna get that out of the way, you know, I squirrel.
I think part of that referral, though, requires, you know, proof that there's capacity to serve the project, or alternate means of demonstrating that you will have your own sewer service. So, you know, although the boards made that referral, you know, if I send them plans as is, that may not provide them with enough information. Yeah, so, um, if you wanna supplement that before we actually do the referral, does that make sense?
Well, you wanna, do you two wanna talk offline?
Sure.
Yeah.
Are the boards okay if they discuss? Okay. So why don't you guys talk offline about what needs to get sent this way?
One of the concerns about blasting was the damage to foundations of many of the houses.
Yes. So, you know, whatever we come up with for.
I think you have blasting in some of your other resolutions, so I'll also pull that and see if there's something.
Okay, cool. Alright, it's not something we deal with very often here, so this is, my seven years is the first time, so.
Yeah, probably.
Alright, we'll work it out. Thank you, sir. Have a good night. I still don't see Simon, right?
No.
Okay. Well, this is where Kelly gets to take her hat off. And we get to get, we get to transfer everything over to our new.
Oh, I mean, I could just fill you in on what very common it is.
I told you, they said they were gonna be here, I'm giving them to the very end. Uh, Skyboat, Skyzone Woodbury Center, review and discuss materials submitted for an amended site plan and special permit and ARB for indoor recreation use in a tenant space at Woodbury Center, said properties located at Center Drive in Central Valley, and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 225 Block 2 Lot 1 dot 12. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, uh, my name is Derek Bedley, I work for Cast Hill in the long-term engineering for Skyzone. Um, I received, you know, your guys' comments on Monday, and reviewed, and gotta give you direction to our engineers and architects to make the necessary changes as far as, uh, truncated elements and just notating specific guidance for the comments. I also have an additional topic on the traffic study, that was proposed that I believe you brought in earlier.
Yeah, if you could just send that to the building department, and then they'll, they'll redistribute it out to everybody, please. Sorry. I was switching tabs, both in here and here. Does anybody have questions for the applicant before we go to Natalie and Dr. Phil? Dr. Phil?
Okay, uh, we have a memo August 7th, uh, we'll review the information that you're gonna submit on the traffic and parking. I, I think the only real, uh, we had four items in, in the memo. The, the most important item is in terms of the number, projected number of occupants here, and what transpires in that northeastern area of parking a lot, just walk the building there. There's, there's a lot going on right in that area, right there. So, if we're gonna, based on your projections in the traffic study, you wanna see, yep.
You wanna go over?
Yeah.
So, you know, just for pedestrian movements to and from the building, I think you wanna take a better look at that, whether we need some additional crosswalk signing, et cetera. But, we'll have to look at the traffic projections and the, and the park numbers that you're projecting, really delve into that, but that's where our concern is, depending on, I mean, I think you're talking about 265 active jumpers at one time or something, possibly.
Possibly, and that will include their basic drawings.
Yep. So, what that equates to in terms of the number of people and cars, and, but that area just, there's a lot going on right there, so if that's gonna be of the main pedestrian car, do we wanna see some improvements there possibly?
Yeah, so, in our proposal that we kind of sent in for our application, we have, obviously, as you know, a new.
You got just a, they're out there.
Chris, if you go to the two pages after this.
Yep, hold on, Natalie wants me to go somewhere else.
If, yeah, if you go to the two pages after this, it's the proposed plan, next one. Yeah, so that's where the improvements are going to be, um.
I wanted him to keep guessing.
So.
Yeah, so, as you mentioned, the proposed improvements to the site, we're gonna have the four new ADA access stalls here, and stripe out to the, uh, new ADA ramp, to the access area. Obviously, in the writer comments, we'll, we'll have the truncated elements as requested, uh, preliminary, we're, we're talking about truncated dome here before we get to the drive aisle, and then again here, the landing of the new ADA ramp, uh, just to give some of us a better feel, or, uh, the shared comments.
In other skyzones, are there a lot of groups or camps, like during the summer, like bus traffic, or is it primarily just people in private cars that go to these places?
It will be, I would say, ninety-nine percent just general commission, no, um, I would assume that local high schools or junior highs would maybe consider some field trip, uh, but that's kind of not predictable.
Right, well, I didn't know, I just didn't know they had a business model where they try to, like, bring large groups in at a time, and stuff like that.
Now, honey, there are, uh, party rooms for birthday parties, uh, so there will be, you know, eaves and clothes to, to the, uh, conceived as parties or whatnot, and whatnot, so you're gonna have a head or a head club, obviously, with the big parties that are hot, and, and, and all hot parties, those parties coming. But as far as flow traffic goes, we don't anticipate anything over, say, a family person standing for a trunk.
What about, uh, the Phil, the addition in this area, because it's primarily catering to smaller people, of speed humps or something like that?
Well, that's, in terms of that whole corner there, uh, signing, whether or not we want some raised crosswalks, possibly, speed humps. It really depends on what the projections are, too.
Okay.
And, and, I think this is a reference, they have 270 of these, so there should be some hard data on what they generate. But that whole area, we really wanna look at in terms of signing, uh, the raised crosswalk, wait, maybe.
I just worry because it's, it's more younger people, and that's kind of like a long stretch of, like, in the front of that building.
Straight away.
Straight away, you know, people tend to get a little carried away when they, see, I just think, because I take my own kids to some places like this, and I, and I know what it's like, people, so. Anything we could do, or you guys would be willing to do to maybe help calm the traffic there?
Yeah, so you're, we're talking speed bumps in the main, in general?
Possibly.
Yeah, in that, where the, at least maybe before, after, where the crosswalk, the main crosswalks would be.
So, if you don't know, can you just, uh, plan once a little bit, so we can see the previous, uh, insurance for the staples, or former staples? Just, just over here in, in general. So, what you're proposing is that we put in some, maybe some speed bumps coming into the area, and then maybe just after, maybe, maybe, or something of that.
Yeah. Where we, where we, we would expect most of the pedestrian traffic to be. I know, we can't account for people that are just gonna run across the parking lot, but.
Absolutely, yeah, and I just wanted to put it in your guys' mind, this is a secondary address now, there was, uh, you know, a deal in place with a adjacent tenant that, um, kind of handcuffed us in our location for our entrance.
Okay.
I guess they couldn't, could, I don't know the finer details of the situation with the adjacent tenant, but from what I understand, we weren't allowed to use this as the main address due to a, um, old lease agreement with the landlord in the adjacent tenant. So, with that being said, yeah, I mean, if you guys want us to throw some, um, speed bumps over here, and then just over here.
Yeah.
Is it something, uh, could maybe expect comments on for a desired location, or you just want to know something that the board's thinking?
I would suggest you put together a proposal, and then we can review it and tweak it.
I'm sure there's some standards around where they're supposed to be, right? There's a standard for everything, so.
We've contracted with Dynamic Engineering.
Yes, they, they should know the approach, yes.
Okay, alright, well, we'll leave it up to them, and then we'll come back next time.
Great.
Any other concerns, as far as traffic from the board?
No. It's just gonna be a line, or is there gonna be a physical barrier between the closing part and spots?
Uh, what's, I think what's there now is.
How was the simple for, that's what you're asking?
Yes.
I think most of that lot is pulled for right now.
Yes.
There's no separation, yeah.
Yeah, with the exception of the new ADA parking spaces, we don't anticipate, uh, additional parking blocks being sold.
I mean, that, that parking lot does have a lot of open spots, so.
Yeah, and in specific places.
Yeah, that, that's like a dead area of the.
Yeah, currently.
Currently. What?
Currently.
Currently, right, okay.
There will not be a lot.
Right.
Hope so.
Anything else on, on traffic for now? Natalie?
Sure, I'll try to keep it brief. The bulk table should be updated and provided on the site plan. Increases in impervious coverage are obvious based on the addition of the new curb ramps, so that should be reflected in the revised bulk table. Um, with respect to parking, the code requirements for retail and personal service are the same. Um, if the board remembers, there is an existing parking waiver for the site. Um, it was last reaffirmed for harbor freight, um, and in that determination for harbor freight, the board considered another application, that was Woodbury Fresh, uh, who was proposing to eliminate ten parking spaces. That's, since expired, so if you consider that plus ten, minus four, or six here, um, you're actually still within your prior waiver, um, so we recommend that you reaffirm that, it's two percent. Um, water for the center is provided by the Village of Harriman, sewer treatment is direct through Orange County Sewer District. Uh, the applicant should confirm whether the demand for the proposed use is changing, estimates can be based off of the DEC multipliers, or, um, one year's worth of data for another similar facility, which, again, uh, there are several based on the applicant's narrative. Spot elevation should be provided along the accessible route and near handicap stalls, you've already discussed, the detectable warning surfaces will be provided. Um, it's not clear whether any changes to lighting on the, like, wall packs, you know, may, may be proposed, so that should be, uh, demonstrated on the plan. Um, there's only one healthy tree on the, oh, I shouldn't say only one healthy, but in the proximity of the work, so it's not clear whether or not that's proposed to remain. Um, so that should be confirmed, and, you know, the board can consider landscaping to your satisfaction. Um, let's see. Technically, this does require a loading berth. Yes, it's shown in the plan, so I guess it is, it is proposed to remain? Then you can indicate that on the plan, please, sure. Um, so there is technically a loading berth that's required for the space. I'm not sure if there is one on the rear, do you know?
Are, are you talking about the loading docks?
Yes, there is.
Staples had one.
Okay, so you'll maintain that, so you could just clarify that on the plan, too, and then that resolves that comment. Uh, we had comments on striping and ARB that should be addressed. Uh, the information on the wall sign, it appears to comply. Um, but the applicant should confirm that that's only going to be illuminated during operating hours, that's a stipulation of the center. Um, if modifications to the pylon sign are proposed, are you adding a panel? Okay, that should be added to the plans? Okay, so, yeah, otherwise we defer to counsel on secret and public hearing requirements.
That'd be you.
That'd be me. So, I'm new to the party, Leader Shoretta, I'll be taking, well, trying to fill in Kelly's shoes, hard to do, but.
Their heels tonight, too.
That's gonna hurt, with you, Mike, he's asked.
Thank you to the board. So, I'm new to this party, I'll be reviewing this application. One other question, it looks like to me would appear to be a type-two action to secret, because you have an existing building, what's the total square footage of improvements that, that you're doing here, do you know?
Um, I don't have another, uh, and, uh, thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand, yeah, so I, that, in that case, I change to an unlisted action to secret for this new secret project. And the other thing I would just need to confirm is, we definitely need to JML, I think, on this one, so we'll do that, but then I'll follow up with the chairman, members of the board with the memo in the next meeting.
Thank you, Lino, appreciate it. Um, the, the coloring, the sky zone, is that a corporate logo?
Yes.
Can we get something, uh, that it is a corporate logo?
As, as far as, like, some type of memorialization of that, or?
Yeah, just because the colors are a little bit different than what's, and it's no different than what we did with Harbor Freight, so if we just, that'd be appreciated, sir. I'm sorry, does anybody have any other questions for Natalie?
I just, the sewer and water are gonna be way more than a Staples from, for a party center, so.
They have to provide the estimates still. Um, I don't think, I think on the projected water and sewer demand form, I believe it was blank.
Yeah, Staples is a couple, some employees, they're not throwing parties with a bunch of kids and families, and.
So, what you've done in the past is, um, requested the applicant secure a will-serv letter from the Village of Harriman, and then obviously, this will, if it is increasing, you know, presumably so, it will be referred to the county, um, again, under the similar processes we discussed for the online applications.
So, I guess the question I have with that is, there's, these, these sites exist all over, is this similar in size to other sites, or are there sites? So, what we've done in the past with, uh, establishments like this is when you, instead of using the, the industry averages, is we ask that you provide, uh, water and sewer usage for other facilities. And then that's what we would give to, or you would have to give to Harriman, let them make their determination off.
So, just another similar skies on the, uh, same square footage?
Same square footage, yeah, and probably, what, six months?
We do one year's worth of data, that's the regular, yeah. Um, and actually, just to the point about sewer, I believe Woodbury Center has their own agreement with the county.
Okay.
So, again, that's part of the applicant's process that they need to go to the county about, but just for the record.
So noted.
And just one other comment, I mean, this, because this may be an unlisted action, I would just have your board declare themselves the agency tonight, because you're the only agency, I would take that motion, just declare yourselves the agency.
Alright, so.
And I would also have the applicant, to the extent, yeah, I would say, see you once, get an EAF for short form.
What was that?
An EAF.
Short form?
Environmental assessment form for your own project, so, thank you.
So, any other questions for the, okay, so I'll, uh, offer motion to type this as an unlisted action on the secret, and declare this board's intent to serve as lead agency. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I think it's it. Anybody, I miss anything? Kelly's like, nope, I won't be here. Alright, look forward to your next submission. Thank you. Alright, we're almost there, two to go. Eleven Abrams Road, review and discuss materials submitted for an amended site plan and special permit, and freshwater permit for modifications to an office building, said property is located eleven, uh, Abrams Road in Central Valley, is known as the Village of Woodbury's Tax Map, Section 226 Block 1 Lot 30, 38. Welcome back. No. Did, Claudia, did you remember his name?
Okay.
What?
Oh, perfect, okay, yeah, good, yeah, thank you, everybody.
Our technology has just died.
What's up? Oh, yeah, my screen went black, not, not on purpose. Alright, sir, welcome back. Thank you. I just wanna remem, remind the board that, even though this applicant is here because of a notice of violation, that we are to review this application as if it doesn't actually exist yet. So, just as we go through the review process and comments and feedback, let's pretend that the basement isn't there. Well, the basement's there, but it's not finished. How about, clear that out. Dr. Phil?
Uh, we have a memo from August 7th, uh, really just two, uh, comments at this point. One is, uh, it asked a bit of trips based on instituted transportation engineers for the new space, for both the existing space and the new space. Is the existing space upstairs fully occupied? And the changes that you're making on the first floor?
Just the basement.
It's just the ba, it's just the basement, okay. So, I just clarify that, and then, uh, we wanted to see what the current parking utilization is, peep park utilization for the square footage upstairs, because we'll use that to look at what the real parking would be with the added space.
And you should provide a better control?
Yes. If you could provide that.
Besides the, uh, lay, it's the only connection to this, 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 this.
Understood, it, we're not asking for full traffic study, we just wanna see what the estimates are, but we wanna know what's going on there today in terms of this parking spaces that are being utilized under the curries. Those were my only comments.
Questions for Phil? Alright, uh, you know what, I, I know we'll go to you now, I don't see, where is the dumpster going? You have to add it in, because you, you took up, well, the dumpster is now, is now a spot, well, on, well, on your new plans, it's, it's actually a spot, so we gotta figure out where that's gonna go. Okay, so, um, just a word of caution, it's gotta stay out of the one-hundred foot and the fifty-foot buffer. We had that with another applicant that wanted to put their dumpster in the water quality, the buffer, and can't do that. No, no, but I'm saying you can't actually, when you locate the dumper, dumpster, don't put it in the, over, in the, in the water quality overlay, please. We're just gonna tell you to move it. Alright, Natalie?
Sure, um, the bulk table needs to be updated to reflect the net lot area for the site, as this is a commercial building. Um, a second accessible stall should be provided, um, based on the number of stalls proposed, and according to ADA requirements. Um, with respect to water supply, the prior site plan that was provided showed a well, um, but now you're proposing a municipal connection? It. When that happened, okay. Um, well, the water service should be shown on the plan, and also the well that was shown on the original site plan should be confirmed, but it was formally abandoned. Sure, so there's some investigation on your part and written response to the board. Sure. Um, the increase in demand for the added office space appears to be two hundred and ten gallons per day, which is within the amount that is accepted under your moratorium. Um, we recommend that you confirm that with counsel. There is a private septic system that serves the site, it's being upgraded to accommodate the increase in demand. Confirmation on adequate soils in the expans, expansion area should be provided through testing witnessed by the building department. Um, also, typically, we'll request a certified letter that the septic tank is in good working condition, um, so that should be inspected and provided in the next submission. The limits of disturbance should be shown on the plan and quantified, um, based on the proximity to regulated wet, uh, water bodies. We recommend a certified letter be provided from a qualified professional confirming that the existing stormwater management facilities are in good working condition. Um, so the prior plan showed that there was, I think, a pond and some culverts crossing the road, uh, so those should all be, ma, made sure that they're in good condition. Um, with respect to loading berths, the, according to the code, there should be at least one, so there's not any shown on the current plan, but it also wasn't shown on the prior plan. So, we recommend that be referred to the building inspector to determine if that's a legally pre-existing non-conforming condition. Um, let's see, the applicant should confirm compliance with the landscaping requirements of your code, uh, confirm if there are changes to lighting, you've already discussed refuse disposal, and also ARB, is there any modifications to the front of the building? Just the ramp and the access, okay. Um, so then, it seems like an ARB form would not be required in this instance. Uh, and then also regarding the wetlands and the proximity to the proposed work areas, we recommend that this be submitted for a jurisdictional determination? Oh, great. There is, it is subject to, is there any review authority by the DEC or ACOE, or?
Um, special, uh, site walk around, just to sign off on the delineation.
Oh, okay, so you've just gotten the delineation resolved? Okay, um, so we'll look for that in your next submission, um. So, yes, and then also, then, at that point, once the delineation is confirmed, you will be able to confirm whether or not there's a local freshwater wetlands permit required. Um, a part one EAF was submitted, we've indicated some comments on that, uh, we defer to counsel on GML referral, and then, I think that we have to kind of wait to make a decision on the public hearing for now, because if a freshwater wetlands permit is required, then a public hearing is required, okay?
With the, uh, water, being the building is in use right now, shouldn't we just go to the water department and get the last year's of use?
Um, well, you can, but it, the way the moratorium is worded, it would be the increase, so it doesn't really matter what's happening existing, it's what the projected increase is.
Right, but what, this building before, the reason I'm asking is because you can, if you look at the water usage, you can see when the, the change to the building was done.
Oh.
You can see prior years' usage from when they were a water customer to when the capacity or the increase in the building was.
Sure, so.
So, that would be more reliable way to look at what the increase is actually going to be, other than just based off the.
The unit rate multipliers.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean, we can, the applicant can request that from the water department and provide that as part of their next submission, um. I, I don't object to using the unit rate multipliers, but, well, let's do the, we, I mean, I think it's just belt and suspenders, right?
Check it out, which one's first?
And if they abandon the well, the DOH should have record of that.
What's that?
The Department of Health, the DOH should have record if they abandon a well on the property.
Yeah, we would like that.
Yeah, they should have that record, because you have to, because of the grouting requirements.
He's not sure it was ever even constructed.
I, I, contact the Orange County DOH, because there's grouting requirements and everything else to abandon wells, and there's a bunch of DOH requirements.
Yeah. Yeah, it could have been a change, I, I'm not sure, um, you know, and a lot of times, we see that those well drillers' records were never submitted in the first place, you know, unfortunately, so, um, you know, that, that's also an issue. But, I think we'll get there.
Now, you did say there's gonna be no additional disturbance, but if you're adding eight spots in the front left, those spots don't exist yet, right? Okay, just in those, those front eight, okay.
Yeah, between that and then the ADA access and the septic system expansion, those are the areas of disturbance at this time.
I, I just, that's like, close, okay.
Yeah.
Any questions for Natalie? Yeah, Mina?
Yes, this one I would pass by as a type-two action to secret, six seventeen, five, C two, it's type-two action.
Thought it was gonna get something more profound out of you.
Yeah, not for this one. Also, JML.
Alright, so I'll offer motion to type this as type-two on the secret.
A second, Phil.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And we agree to hold in the public hearing until we get the wetlands determination, correct?
That's correct.
Okey-dokey, alright.
Can we refer to the ZBA, in case we do the loading berth?
Sure. I'll offer, uh, referral to the ZB, well, actually, no, we gotta make a referral to the building inspector to determine if it's a pre-existing non-conforming first, right?
Yeah, yep, and then you could do the ZBA.
Okay, so our first motion is a referral to the building inspector to determine pre-existing non-conforming for the loading berth? Your, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Claudia. And then the second motion, uh, for referral to the ZBA for any and all relief that they may require. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.